Good morning.
Good morning. So Charlie, hold on just a second.
Amber, you're on mute.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm doing a phone call too. I'm finishing up a phone call.
Good morning.
Hey, Tim.
Morning. Apologies, I'm gonna wear this headset. My neighbor's doing some tree work and it's pretty loud, so I'm gonna stick with the headset.
Andrew, this is Charlie. Congratulations on your election to the council. Looking forward to working with you.
Hi, Charlie. I appreciate that. You as well.
All right, so apparently Bonnie and Rob are in City Hall, so Ellen Lorraine's gonna let them know.
Okay.
That it's Zoom. I don't know either of them, if we can get either of them set up here.
Well, they should be able to zoom in. If one of them sits in conference room and one of them sits in the chamber, they should be able to link in.
Right, if they have, um, if they have laptops available.
Well, both of them carry a laptop, so.
I'll run out and see.
Well, I'll check.
Do we need, is Brent gonna need to talk at all? You have mentioned that Josh and you and Morgan would.
Yeah, I think Brent might need to talk when we speak about the street inventory schedule.
When we get to that, I'll promote him to panelists.
Okay.
But before we start on your presentation, I kinda wanna go over the kinda fiscal outlook and stuff.
What?
The fiscal outlook.
Okay, sure.
I'll be right back.
And Rob is, needs to be upgraded. Yeah. We'll get started in just a couple minutes. Bonnie went home because she didn't have her computer with her, and Rob is linked in in the building, so he'll be upgraded momentarily.
I don't see Rob Morgan on yet.
He said he was on, he was. No, he's not there.
I'll go check.
I can check it. Stay there and see if he can, I'll check and you can, you can link him in.
So we'll end up starting just a few minutes late. I've been looking, I also don't see Tim Ritzer on yet.
I'll give Tim a quick buzz.
Thank you.
Rob's logging in now.
Okay. Up there's Rob. Good morning, Rob. Sorry about the confusion.
Oh, I just, I should have checked the agenda, but I had it in my calendar for taking place here in chambers. I think we did say that because we wanted to be able to see stuff.
Right, and then I, and then I sent an email and I sent an email to everybody and Bonnie replied that she did not think that we should meet in person.
The original posting did say council chambers. Well, I should have checked. Sorry for that. That's okay. Andrew, were you all to Tim?
Yes, I'm sending him an email now.
Bonnie should be along any minute.
Yeah, so I'm just resending Bonnie and Tim their personal links to join.
Okay. Emery, do you see Morgan?
Morgan's in the attendees, so I'll promote her when we get to that.
Okay. Thank you. Rob and Andrew, Andrew, Emery sent out a memo this morning. Did you all print it out or have you looked at it?
I haven't printed it out, no.
Oh, you've looked at it.
I've got, Rob, do you want a paper copy? I can bring it over.
Emery, I'll come on over and get it. Is that the same as the one that was in the agenda?
No, and so I'm gonna, I was gonna share the screen to go over it.
Okay, but let me, let me come over and get it.
Okay.
Andrew, did you see it?
Yeah, I did. I can, I'm just gonna have, I have a second screen up here with the slides that you sent over yesterday, so I'll just print, I'll just print it out here.
All right, terrific. Just so you have access to it. Hey, Tim. Bonnie apparently ran into Tim on coming, as she left City Hall, so he just went home. He's logging in now.
Yeah, I saw him in the parking lot and told him it was Zoom, so he's, he's heading home.
Okay. I didn't even hear Bonnie was on.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we just can't see. We need to log in. You need to upgrade your.
All right, hang on, hang on.
So I just resent both you and, and Tim the, the personal login, so you, I guess you, you could get that, cause, so, sorry for the confusion.
I'll have to notice that the shield of the city of Lewis is behind me.
I noticed that, on one side and the American flag on the other, so you're.
That's pretty fine, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I've got artwork behind me.
That's, that's good, too.
I've got lots and lots of paper behind me.
So just to be clear, we come back for the executive session in person?
Yes, the executive session is in person. When I sent out the email last week about the location of this, the preference was that, that we not do it in public because we were gonna have to have too many people.
Right.
Or that we not do it in person.
Okay, I just don't think that, that circle got squared.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Well, and actually Andrew pointed out last night that the agenda both had a Zoom link and said it was in City Hall, so I did fix that. That was last night.
Hopefully Tim will be along in a moment.
So we do have, I did let the department managers know, you know, that we'd be discussing these, you know, there are a number of capital purchases that at this point we have put off. And, and I did let the department managers know that this is probably the meeting where we'll find out if they will be put off till, you know, to the next fiscal year or beyond, or if they'll, if any of these will be done this year. So we may have some of the department managers that may wanna participate at some point. Oh, in the chat, we have, who is Josh Elliott? Oh, I'm sorry. Josh, while we're waiting for Tim, why don't you introduce yourself? That was a private chat.
Oops. So for everyone who doesn't know me, I am an engineer at George Malsen Bureau. I work under Charlie. On the projects today, I did a lot of work on Phase 24, and I've been working with Allison Parks and Rec and Vince Luciani at GMB for the tennis court rehabilitation.
He doesn't work under me, he works with me. We got it. Oh, what's taking Tim so long? He said he was in his house. I called his house number and he answered, so. There he is. He's in the attendees. You need to upgrade him, Emery. Thank you. Hello, Tim.
Good morning. Regret the delay.
No problem. Log your video in.
Thank you. All right, we've got audio. Let's, I'm ready to roll, whatever you all are.
Okay, let's log your video in as well, so we can see your smile, your smiling face. Anyway, so it is August the 26th, and it is now 9/11, and we're here for a meeting of the Capital Projects Committee to discuss various projects that are pending before the City Council and an update on where we are. First item on the agenda is a review of the transfer tax revenues. So Ellen Lorraine, you wanna bring us up to date on that?
Ellen Lorraine, I can put this one handout up on the screen, because it is on the last line of the handout.
That's correct.
Into more detail.
Hopefully all of you did see the handout that Anne Marie sent out earlier this morning.
Nope.
And it's.
It's going to be up on your screen, so you'll see it now.
I saw it, but I haven't had a chance to pay any attention to it. It just came, it just arrived.
We, yep, we just got the numbers together late yesterday, so, um, so it's on the screen.
Okay, so as mentioned in the spreadsheet that Emery is showing, the total transfer taxes city has received to date to the April, May, June, and July is $710,130.66. City budgeted for FY 2021, 1.6 million. And so at the end of July, comparing it to budget, we are at 44% of budget.
And Ellen Lorraine, how does that compare to last year? At this time?
Let's.
How far, how slow are we?
So we are ahead of where we should be, being four months into the fiscal year, but when you look at last year.
My guess is that we're ahead of last year. Yes, I think we are, Rob.
And, and a lot of that has to do with the transfer of Harbor Health Care.
Yes.
Because that, that was one of the.
Larger transactions.
That was one of the larger transactions where the transaction was more than $3 million, so that was 208,000.
Yeah, 208,000.
And is that something that we had budgeted for, that we took into account when we set the 1.55 million?
No.
No.
It wasn't known at the time we set the budget.
Okay.
So last year, at the end of July, we were at 541,000, but I believe we need to deduct, I don't know, 541, so we are ahead of where we were last year significantly.
Quite a bit over last year.
If you back out Harbor Health, though, where.
Behind.
We're right about the same, or maybe 30,000 behind.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
But there's been an immense number of transactions occur, and this is as of July. Does this include the July transfer taxes or not?
It does. April, May, June.
Yes.
All right. All right, so.
So I, I just thought it would be helpful to go through that first, because a lot of our capital projects are funded with transfer tax, and that actually is one of, one of our stronger revenue lines that is, you know, more in line with where we expected it to be. And if you recall, one of the things with the transfers of more than 3 million, the decision of council was to use that for capital projects.
Right.
So we are still tracking it separately, but, but it is, it is for, it is available for capital projects.
Okay. All right.
So before we go, I mean, Charlie's got his standard presentation, but before we go to that, I did wanna go through a number of the budgeted projects and equipment. Charlie will get into the projects, but the equipment really are separate, and they're not in Charlie's presentation, so, so I wanted to kinda let you know where, where we stand with those. The projects and the equipment that are on the spreadsheet that's on the screen are things that have not been done yet. They're in the budget, but they have not been, been done. So we've got the George H.P. Smith Playground Phase 2, which was in the Parks and Recreation Commission budget. There was a matching grant for that with the state's outdoor recreation park and trail grant program, and so we have $36,950 in the general fund budgeted that would also be matched by the state. So, you know, we can keep that in, we can defer it till the next year. Whatever we do, we, if we do defer it, we would need to hold it for the next, we would have to extend the grant to next fiscal year as well.
Do we think we can do that?
Um, yes, they've been very, as long as we communicate with them.
Great.
They're, they're pretty good about letting us extend the grants.
And what is the, remind me, what is the Phase 2 going to do?
It, um, it was a swing set, I think a small pavilion. I think.
Actually, I think there are three phases to this, aren't there? Because the swing set I thought was part of Phase 2, and maybe the pavilion was too, I don't know.
I thought the pavilion was part of Phase 2 as well.
Okay. But it's, it's, it's further expansion of the playground that we did last year. I think it's of note that last year, I don't know whether it happened again this year, we did receive some additional outside contributions from, I think County Bank made a contribution, well, certainly one of the banks, if it is in County Bank, made a $1,000 contribution towards the equipment, so. And we have this new group, the Friends of George D. Truett. Exactly. So before we, I think that's one we could probably look around in the community, see what other support there is. I know that playground is getting used quite a bit.
Right, and, um, you know, again, I don't think that you necessarily have to make decisions on these today, because we will do our budget amendments in, in September, but, but the idea is at least to get a sense of, you know, at, at least to give you a sense of what's on the table. Second Street bump outs that we had budgeted $15,000 for tree replacement in the residential portion of Second Street. We also had budgeted $35,000 for, we'd say, visual equipment in council chambers, and that was to replace those projectors. I think you, you all probably recall that it gets a little, a little blurry at times. Given that we're not meeting in council chambers, again, this is something that could consider to defer till next year. And then we have furniture. We do need to buy furniture for the maintenance department, for Allison, Rick, and, and Kenny. They're, they all kinda have older hand-me-down things, so, so we were going to get furniture for that office, but, you know, again, if it needs to be delayed, I think that's, that's something that could be delayed.
Emery, I think, I noticed that Marty's on, and she's the tree person. You might wanna elevate her to talk about the bump outs on Second Street. Because those, I think we've removed six or more trees already from there because they've died. She may wanna have some comments on that one real quick.
So let me see, can I? Looking for Marty. There she is. All right, Marty, I've unmuted you. Are you able to talk about the, the trees on Second Street?
Hi, this is Marty. Took me a while to figure out how to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, on the Second Street, I, I think the problem with Second Street is that it's looking very neglected right now. Early, you know, last year, we did develop a plan with Bartlett, and we did a walk-through and decided there were certain trees we were gonna keep, certain trees we were gonna remove. We're gonna rejuvenate all of the planting holes, including the planting holes that, that still have trees in them, similar to what was done with the locust trees on the business side, air spading and stuff, you know, that planting holes are, really have terrible soil in them, and, and, you know, that's one of the things we're doing to, we wanna do to help ensure success next time. Early this spring, some, some pests were found in some of the existing trees, so what we did is we removed the trees we had planned to remove anyway. We treated the remaining trees. My concern is if we don't act now and rejuvenate the planting holes and, of the existing trees, they might go downhill again, because they're, they're, they're not in good shape right now. Um, and, and, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to complete the capital project to make Second Street frankly look better. Right now, it looks very neglected, and it's not a look I like to see on one of our major residential streets. And a lot of business people go through there too, just, just as they go through the business section, they end up driving through that area. It really doesn't have a good look for the city, in my opinion.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Marty. The, just in, in other tree-related news, we did get a bill from Bartlett for $20,000 for the cleanup from the storm damage from, you know, the large tree that fell at Zwanndale, some other tree damage to city trees. So that was a pretty significant bill that, you know, we're, we're going to submit to DEMA, and hopefully we get some of it reimbursed, but, just so you know, this is on your radar.
Is, is that covered by the cities, at least in part by the city's insurance?
Ellen Lorraine, do you wanna answer that?
We can follow up. I think it's best initially to submit it to DEMA and hopefully get 75% reimbursement for that, and then the remaining may fall below or deductible.
I don't think it would, they'll reimburse for a tree that fell without causing structural damage.
Well, I I'm not sure about that.
It's worth it asked, absolutely.
The only reason I say that is I, you know, at least on my homeowners, I had a tree that was hit by lightning. It hadn't fallen, it just died because it was hit by lightning and it was covered by my homeowners. So I I don't know what's in the cities, how the city's insurance is written on this point, but it might be worth taking a look at.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, and then the last capital equipment purchase that we have in the. In the general fund is the the police vehicle. We had budgeted $10,000 for a police vehicle. And we usually use the $30,000 grant from Sussex County to supplement that. We use $10,500 of the county grant for the has been used to purchase a new watch guard server, which is where we keep all of our dash cam footage. So if we were going to purchase a police car this year. It there would be a total of of 20,500 instead of 10,000 that would come out of that. However, the watch guard was budgeted in the general fund, so it's a net. Control. But again, it was the the. It needed to be purchased early in the fiscal year and given the uncertainty with some of the revenues. Ellen Lorraine and I made the determination that it needed to come out of the Sussex County grant so that. We had that option of deferring a vehicle if if council chose to do that.
And Emery, help me with the arithmetic again. The grant was 30,000 from the county. We used 10,500 of it for the server. That leaves 19.5.
Yes.
So the 19.5, how much is a police vehicle?
A police vehicle is going to be about $40,000 based on the last one we purchased.
So we need to come up with another, that's, there's the arithmetic, 20,500. The the cost of the police vehicle wasn't in there.
And that's, and that's fully outfitted.
Right.
Yep. Except for a dog, that costs over 1,000 more.
Yeah, I I think we need information from Chief Spell about whether this can be bumped or not.
We need vehicular vehicular information.
Okay, so we we can do that when we do the the discussed budget amendments in September.
Right.
Which I I was going to suggest that we do a special meeting for that because the regular meeting is going to be very packed.
I agree.
So. And then moving on to municipal street aid, I guess one thing of note is that the governor and his proposed budget had increased the allocation of. The street aid to 10 million. And because of the pandemic and the revenue shortfalls associated with the pandemic, it was bumped back down to 6 million. So when we passed the budget, we anticipated $194,000 in MSA. Our actual allocation from from the state is 116,350, which is consistent with last year. We do have money in our checking account. Um, that our MSA checking account from including some prior year reserves. So there's a a current balance of 238,000 and 37,639 of that is obligated. So there's about $200,000 in our checking account for MSA that is unobligated. That could help to offset some of these costs. And I know we've talked before about using the prior year reserves of MSA, that that's not a pot of money that we intend to just let sit. So.
To be correct, Emery, your 238,000 includes 116,000, correct?
It does not. We have not gotten that yet.
Okay, so, okay, so then we actually will have, you know, almost, we'll have almost 360 in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we had two lines budgeted for sidewalk and and minor sidewalk.
Can I go back to MSA for just a second?
Yes.
Just if if Tim and Andrew are unaware of this, and if you are aware of it, stop me, but. For a long time, council had a policy of only spending 50% of MSA funds. And over the past couple of years, we've talked, we've revisited that policy and and asked ourselves why we would do that. And I think that's what's led to what Emery talked about, about thinking more about spending what we've got instead of sending, keeping it in an account. For all kinds of reasons, because we have almost limitless need for this kind of of money for streets. And it doesn't, it doesn't really seem logical to hang on to it. And if I was the state, I would come by and say, well, why are we giving you all this money? Man, I know it's a formula, but why are we giving you all this money if you're not, if you're not spending it, you must not need it. So that was, that's what Emery was referring.
And each year, both SCAT and the League of Local Governments advocate for. One, retaining the allocation and two, increasing how much is budgeted. So I do think that if if we're not spending it. You know, it it could not look good to the state. So I think I think we we came to the conclusion that it's better to spend that. So that's not one where we necessarily need to have.
Right.
A a strong reserve.
Well, while we're, while we're bringing Tim and Andrew up to speed on this, let's be, let's go ahead and offer a little bit more information. There has been, under the Marquel administration, one year it was zeroed out, there was no MSA money. And it had been constant at $5 million statewide up until last year, when it was increased to six. And this year, because of the governor's anticipated budget and the anticipated. Plus of the budget, we were, we actually received a letter from the Department of Transportation signed by Secretary Cohen, giving us the $194,000 that we put into the budget. So this was all done based upon the best information available at the time the budget was adopted in March.
Yeah.
So this is this, this drop of $60,000 actually was something that happened as a result of the pandemic. And the and the budget shortfall that resulted from that. So the, just so you have a history of what's going on, given the fact that with the current money that we're expecting and the fact that we have 238,000. We're going to have over $350,000 in this, and it looks like we have roughly $38,000 of it already obligated. Seems to me that these projects could all be, could be afforded within this budget, and we still have excess money.
Right, so and and this, just the, of the 16,549 that's been spent to date. The bulk of that was for the recommendations that came out of the Traffic Safety Committee with regards to Henlopen Gardens. And then the stop bar that we installed at Market Street and and Second. So and then the beach, beach parking lot lighting, we have, the money that we've incurred so far has been designed. And then we had budgeted for the one-ton dump truck, which. Our current dump truck is is really not going to make it. So so that is something that that we do need. So gi- given all of that, and again, we can revisit this when we go for the budget amendments, but just kind of wanted to give you a lay of the land on this. And then the the big capital projects are in the the transfer tax fund. And and just so you know, the other thing that comes out of the transfer tax fund is the. The debt service. So this, this again, just shows the the projects that have not yet been. Obligated formally. So we'll we'll talk in in later in the agenda about Phase 24 and the ramps and crosswalks. But that, when you look at the both of them combined, we had budgeted $356,000. But the bid amount, when you look at those, is is more than that. But we do have the the bids and the recommendation for contract on on the agenda later, and Charlie will talk more about that.
But Emery, can I, I I just, I didn't follow something. And I have a question. The the the, I'm looking at the thing so that on the Phase 24, the bid amount is, the bid amount is 350, is. $40,000 more than the budgeted amount, but then in addition to that. Ramps and sidewalks is 70,000 more, right? Because it, the way you said it, it sounded like they were combined.
Yes.
Okay, so my other question is, how much? As we go forward on this, we talked about current year transfer fund revenues. What what do we have in the bank? Overall, what do we have, what is, what is it that we have available to spend? In in and that that would be in transfer tax and then obviously MSA is separate. We know it, we know that's at about 316.
So Ellen Lorraine, the, what what do we have in terms of prior year reserves? Did you?
Uh, we have.
I hear that calculator going.
While she's doing that, I'll just kind of go through these so that we can make sure we get.
Well, before we go there, Emery, let's make one other comment. The first three projects, Phase 24, the ramps and crosswalks in the De Vries Alley and the Bethel Alley improvements, could all possibly qualify for CTF funding.
Absolutely. And there is the opportunity to use some MSA money for for some of this as well.
Exactly.
So, um, so yes, and and. Senator Lopez is aware, I I did let him know last week that we had gotten a a street bid in and that we may be looking.
Yeah, he he's aware we're needing today.
Yes. Um, the only thing is that it would, i- if we do go. If we do go to him for CTF, it'll delay the start based on. Needing to get all the ducks in a row there.
Yeah, but the money, he's got the money available to him now, so.
Right.
Shouldn't create much of a delay.
Weeks to get it.
Right. Have to get it signed off on, yeah.
Right, and as we've done as a matter of policy, when going to Senator Lopez for CTF funds, we have prioritized. You know, so we've given him a pick list and said, you know, this is our top priority, et cetera, et cetera. So he has some idea of the breadth of what we would seek funding for and why. Any.
And then I had a question on the beach parking lot lighting, because after, if it comes out of MSA, it's going to diminish what we can use for other transfer tax fund projects. It's, we spent 11 and 1/2 on design, but we haven't put it out to bid, right?
Right, so Charlie will go through that when Charlie gets to his PowerPoint, he'll go through the status of all of these.
Okay, I'm just thinking that if the, if the bid amounts are coming in a good deal higher, that number might go up too.
Like double on the ramps and crosswalks.
That, can I say something there?
Sure.
Yeah, um. That $90,000 is based on like an estimate from almost three years ago.
It's no good.
While we were, while we were doing the design, we discovered that the. Bases that are out there can't support the stresscrete weather-resistant poles that we want to put. So, yeah, it's going to be significantly more, I want to say, three times as much as the 90.
Three times as much, is that what you said, Charlie?
Yeah, we have two different estimates for bulking up those. The foundation. You know, the. Cylindrical foundations.
Okay. One of the, one of them, we know is already dumped over, so.
Right.
Yeah, we're replacing that one, but all 22 of them need to be upgraded to support those poles.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So. Um. Yeah, so that's a, that's a big one. The the canal front park dock evaluation is is 25,000. We actually. Are, well, Charlie will go through that in his in his presentation. We had budgeted 150,000 for renovations at the police department. And then our our beach rake. At this point, even if we replace it in this fiscal year, we won't have it until next summer. But our our beach rake is is. Again, it it's old and it's wearing. And then the the other big one, again, Charlie will talk about is the tennis courts, where we've got $73,500 budgeted. And that's a matching grant, again, through the state's outdoor recreation parks and and trail grant program. I think that based on the current estimates. That 73,500. Is going to be low, we we will end up needing more than that.
Right.
So, um, so a- again, we we budgeted. Almost 1.6 million. And, well, I guess it is 1.6 when we add the the building tax. And then so far, we've got 710,000. Which is 44% of our budget, and that's at 33% through the fiscal year. So so we're ahead. And Ellen Lorraine, did you figure out how much we have?
So we have about 3 million in cash, and then we have 1.6 million in investments. And besides the items that are on that spreadsheet, the only other definite thing that we do need to fund is our debt service for the bonds, which is budgeted at 720,000. And then our second installment of interest on that, which is about 53,000. So those are things that will be coming up in January.
Yeah, can I ask, is it really? Can we really look at this as a percentage of budget? Because percentage of budget, I always think of as expense and revenue. These are capital projects. I don't, I don't know that really looking at them at a percentage of budget is the way to.
Well.
Simplify it here.
So a- as it relates to the revenue, typically with the the transfer tax, because it comes in throughout the year. That is one where you can look at the revenue as percentage of budget to see if you're on track, because if we were significantly low, we would know we need to adjust it down.
Right, no, I get, I get that. I get that as a percentage of budget because we've, but but these are, these are standalone projects, they're not related to any.
We're not looking at the projects as a percentage of budget.
So.
I put the revenue there just so you can see where we're tracking, but also keeping in mind that 208,000 of that was Harbor Health Care.
Right, so as I understood what Ellen Lorraine just said, we have 4.6 million total in transfer tax. Funds in either in investments in cash, but you have to take out of that about 120,000, I think she said, on the bond and 53,000 for something. I think it might be a dump, a dump truck or a trash.
720,000 for the bond.
720,000.
Yeah, I couldn't hear. Okay, seven, so 720, I thought that was awfully low. 720 for the bond, and what was it for the the other fixed item? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
53 for the interest.
So you've got 700, roughly 780,000, though.
Yeah, so it's the usual roughly 800,000 on that. So so that brings on the the whole bond thing for a couple more years. So that ends, that that means that we end up, if you take roughly 800,000 at what, 3.8 million?
Exactly, 3.8 million.
If we were to empty the account.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that reserve fund, Ellen Lorraine, is designed to be 50% or or more of our annual budget, six months' worth?
That is, we would have zero reserves if we spent all of the cash and then took out for the debt service.
Right.
I mean, this is our operating reserve.
No, this is strictly the transfer tax fund.
Okay. The operating reserve is separate, Rob.
Yeah, the operating reserve, how big is that now?
Um, that's where we have the 2.2 million and then the additional 800,000. So just in reserves, we're talking 3 million in operating.
You have 3, over 3 million in your operating budget.
Right, and then, so we have to add to the 3.8 million total availability in the transfer tax accounts to the 316,000 in MSA, which gives us. A universe, and don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting we we spend all this, but that gives us a universe of 4.116 roughly.
Exactly.
Okay.
And remember, when we created the transfer tax fund and put all of the transfer tax in a a fund to itself. One of the things we noted, under your, under the state statute regarding transfer tax. It can be used for capital projects as one, but it can also be used for public safety. So to the degree that we need to, you know, again, depending on whether or not we get the reimbursement that we're anticipating for. The the police emergency pay, you could use money from your transfer tax fund to to help.
Right.
To support that general fund expense.
Could lighting be considered safety?
Lighting is capital, so lighting could be done in in this fund as well.
Right, so it's, because it's it's capital projects, it's it's debt payment and it's public safety. So we we've never, we've never run out of ways to spend the transfer tax money appropriately.
Right.
Yeah, we've always, we've always approached both of these numbers, the MSA and the transfer tax money, pretty conservatively.
Can I ask one other question? We. Can I ask one other question? We, we also, when we moved the transfer tax funds out of the operating budget, we also, it was understood that there might be situations where we would have to take from the transfer tax funding to supplement the operating budget.
That's right.
So Amber and Ellen Lorraine, do you have any sort of number in mind of what should be held back for that? I mean, again, I'm not suggesting we empty these accounts, but I'm just trying to get a sense of it, about what should be held back to, to, for potentially to supplement the operating budget, particularly given the COVID year we're living through?
I wonder if that's really something we should hold for the next meeting that we get together on. I think it's important for Andrew and Tim particularly that we get through Charlie's presentation on streets, but on the streets projects, rather than get too far down into the budgetary issues here. Because I think the streets project, they help explain why some of these things need to be done. It's just a thought, but I think that it's very important. We're, we're, we're looking at this very critically, and it's all good thoughts, it's all good conversation. But I do think for Andrew and Tim's benefit, it's important we go through these capital projects.
Well, I agree, but if we're going to, if we do take any action, we could, if we're going to spend money, we have to understand what we have to spend.
I agree, but I think Amber was suggesting a separate meeting to talk about budgetary discussion, right? You know, sometime in early September, so.
Then we're not going to vote on anything then today.
I don't think so.
Well, except Phase 24, the bid, the bids that we have in.
Okay, that would be the only item. Okay.
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Please.
Looking at the line item sidewalk and minor street repairs, I'm a little confused why repairs are considered capital projects. It seems to me that that would be funded under some kind of operating side of the ledger.
So it's technically not a capital project. But we look at MSA fund, like as we're looking at the funding, because it's not in the general fund, it, this is more to show you kind of what's available in terms of current year revenues to support capital projects. MSA can be used for capital projects, but that, that street, the minor street and sidewalk repairs are also part of what's spent out of that as well.
So in other words, the fact that you have, we are categorizing this repair for sidewalks as minor street repairs under MSA, that's really an accommodation to get that funding. Is that correct?
Right, well, so the, the MSA funding can be used for any, any street related work and any street related expenses. So it doesn't have to be capital. You know, some, some places use it to support their operation of their streets, maintenance staff. We typically use it for capital, but also some of these smaller things. So it's all part of what's available and what can be spent out of that MSA pot of money.
Right. So that's in effect being driven by the state contribution there, there. Okay, alrighty. All right. And so on the city side of the balance, on our, in our books, is our funding piece, there's a contribution that our, the city makes for that, for that line item. Is that correct, Amber?
No, that is 100%.
It's 100% state. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
No problem. Okay. So are there any other questions? I just wanted to kind of give a, the financial picture of kind of what was budgeted and hasn't been done yet and what, you know, where, where the money stands before we get into Charlie's presentation, which Tim and Andrew will find out quickly, leaves everybody in tears.
Okay.
So are we ready for Charlie's?
I think we are. We have basically an hour that we can devote to Charlie's presentation on the other things.
So are you ready, Charlie?
I am. Appreciate that introduction.
Thanks, Charlie. The clock is ticking.
Can I share my screen, Amber?
I think all of you got this presentation that Charlie's going to show yesterday from an email that I sent. I'm probably forgetting this in advance.
Do you see the share screen icon?
It says host disabled participants.
Oh goodness, okay. Okay, try that now.
Okay.
It didn't intentionally disable. I think that's just the default.
All right, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, let's move right into it. The first order of business is the Phase 24 Street Improvements Project. So I just want to refresh everybody's memory under this agenda item about what the project consists of. And then later on, as Amber mentioned, I think it's the last agenda item, we'll talk about the bids and our recommendation of award. But just to bring everybody back up to speed on what the project consists of, we're looking at two different streets, 4th Street between Savannah Road and Kings Highway. And particularly for the city, it's, it's a minor amount of work because we're just taper milling the edges of the street. When I say edges, we're coming out eight to 10 feet from the curb line on either side and then just overlaying with asphalt. When we looked at the street, that's all that's required. We taper mill the edges so that we don't have any kind of elevation difference at the curb line. We've done this on a lot of streets. And that, that's going to make, you know, just give it a whole new asphalt overlay look and set us up for the next 15 to 20 years. There's road striping involved, which is the city. There's minor sidewalk and curb improvements. When we look at these streets, we walk them to make sure, though we don't want to all the time address every inch of sidewalk or curb that exists, especially on just a mill and overlay project. If there's something that's outstanding that needs to be addressed, that's obviously wrong, we will do that while the contractor's out there doing the paving work. So we have minor amounts of sidewalk and curb improvements, really not that much. When you do these kinds of streets, per ADA, you are required, the city is required to address ramps and crosswalks at intersections. So we've been doing that routinely, and we will do that on this project at Kings Highway. The Savannah Road end was addressed several years ago by Deldot when they did their thin lift overlay of Savannah Road. They did address all the ramps and crosswalks at all the intersecting streets with Savannah Road. So in this case, we're just doing the one at Kings Highway. On Coleman Avenue.
Charlie, before you move to, before you move to that, that does include defined, defined parking spaces on 4th Street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought it did, but I just wanted to confirm.
That's what the striping is.
Okay.
Part of that striping, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Coleman Avenue is, it's deteriorated to the, to a condition where it needs a rebuild. But in addition to its deterioration, it's also a situation where the use has changed over time. What used to be a lightly traveled road, if at best, has turned into a major thoroughfare for emergency vehicles getting to the hospital. So the road's taken a beating over the last five years or more. So we're recommending a full rebuild. When we did it, we designed it as a green street. There was another design parameter that was very important to this project in that the parking on the north side, the city hall side of Coleman Avenue, was sort of the Wild West. People were parking all over the place. There was no arranged parking. The design, as we've done it with the green street, the pervious pavers clearly delineates north side parking now, which is a big improvement to, to what's, what's going on currently. So as I mentioned, the base bids, green street with pervious pavers. And we have an underdrain underneath those pervious pavers that catches the drainage, the infiltration, and takes it to the stormwater piping, any extra, it takes it to a stormwater piping that ties into a Deldot catch basin on Kings Highway. We did provide an alternate bid for regular asphalt paving instead of the pervious that would direct the stormwater runoff into the same catch basin. But it wouldn't promote any infiltration as part of that.
Hey Charlie, I know you're going to get into these details later, but just, just a question on, on both this and the 4th Street and all the other streets.
Sure.
Have the, have the residents been contacted about these projects? Because particularly Coleman is going to be very, very tricky.
Yes.
Some of those houses are right up on the road.
Yes, we had a, a design collaboration meeting with, I won't say every resident, but we probably had four or five of those residents. And I know some of those four or five were there representing the interests of others. So that was last November, December, we had that meeting. And, yeah, they're totally aware of the designs.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Charlie, I have a question. Go ahead, Andrew.
Well, I just had a question whether you could shed some, put some color on kind of where the disconnect between what we've budgeted and just, it's not a huge disconnect, but the 40K that's kind of the bids out there. Could you just maybe touch on where our disconnect might have been in terms of our estimates from a budgeting standpoint?
Sure, yeah. Andrew, the only thing that I can really think of is we only had two bids. We had a bid from JJID, who is the low bidder, and then Sam's Construction was the second bidder. And they were really high compared to JJID. So, you know, some of the typical contractors that bid on our street projects did not respond this time. So that, that's the only thing I can come up with. Some of the items were a little, you know, some of the unit, because we break these all out by unit prices for various items, and some of them didn't match up too much. I think the biggest difference actually, though, was on the ADA ramp part of it.
Okay.
But you, you weren't talking about that. You were talking about the streets, yeah, the 40,000.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, my question, two questions, actually. I noticed on the Coleman Avenue description, it does not include the infrastructure called curbs. Are curbs going to be included in that design?
Yes, we have a curb, a four inch curb that we're, we designed into the north side so that any runoff that doesn't get infiltrated through the pervious pavers will be transferred by that curb to a catch basin on the Kings Highway end.
Okay, and on the south side of the, you're, the south side of the street, is that, or I consider that, I think the west side of the street, is, there's, would be no curb on that side?
Josh, do you want to?
Yeah, so there's not going to be a curb on that side because we didn't want to get into altering that sidewalk in any way. Charlie probably knows a little more of the history on that sidewalk than I do, but it's.
So that, this, the sidewalk on that side is what we call exposed aggregate, that the homeowners, residents there actually paid for. It's a majority of that sidewalk on that side is the exposed aggregate. So when we met with the residents last November, it wasn't absolutely necessary, but it was a key parameter to try to maintain that because they really enjoy the look of it. So we were able to work on the line around it and were able to keep that, but there's no extra curb.
Okay, so I guess what you're doing is you are actually tilting the roadbed.
Yes, yes.
That's what you're doing. Okay.
I should have mentioned that. Yeah, it's actually, we call that super elevating. It's super elevated to the one side, to the city hall side.
Got it. Next question I have is, in your bid process, did the contractors who bid on the, the, this job, have the benefit of your engineering drawings so that they were bidding on the same bushel of apples, so to speak?
Oh yeah, that's typical, yeah.
Okay, so your RFP included your design documents, right?
That's definitely, and specifications, there's a whole book of specifications.
Right.
It includes technical specifications and general conditions, mostly related to the contract and the bidding.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
I think it's worth noting that Kay Carnahan has put in the chat that she met with the design team and loved it. This, you know, there's, this, she goes on to say, this will make our street so much safer and drain well. So that's her comment from Kay, who lives on that street.
Yeah, we, we really liked the green street because of the drainage and also the part, it clearly delineates the parking. It's a bit more expensive, but it'll be a really good look for that street and serve a purpose with that parking delineation.
Hey Charlie.
Yeah.
If we go with the green street option, does that require street sweeping the way pervious pavement does? Is there any particular maintenance requirement with respect to that kind of street?
I mean, I don't, I don't think, well, I'll need to check on that, Bonnie, because I think your regular street sweeping will be fine, but what we've done on the pervious streets is actually use the vacuum sweeper rather than a pressure cleaner. Let me check, let me check on that, yeah, because that.
Because, because that will, it's another expense, I mean, vis a vis which, which kind of pavement to go, go with.
Yeah, my guess is that it probably will require the vacuum because you don't want any, the actual pavers themselves are pervious in this, in addition to the space in between each paper.
Right.
But, um, I don't.
Charlie.
I have a question. Go ahead.
So the maintenance is much lower than pervious asphalt, but there, like you said, there is still a, there is a maintenance item to vacuum, but it's at a much lower incidence than the asphalt is.
There is a comment in the chat that says vacuum the underdrain once every other year, once every year or every other year.
Which brings me to my question, actually, and that is, Charlie, you, you suggested that there's already a drain that runs from Coleman to a stormwater retention pond, I assume it is? Or some other asset? Do, are we sure that that pipe that runs to that retention pond is in good condition, good repair, and is capable of carrying this volume of water that will now be moving through it?
Yeah, so a couple, a couple of things on that is that what we're tying into is an existing catch basin on Kings Highway, which is operated, owned and operated by Deldot. So it's not going directly to a stormwater management pond. And we're installing a catch basin at the end of Coleman Avenue that any drainage that doesn't infiltrate into the ground will, it's like an insurance policy. We'll go into that newly installed catch basin and then be transferred or run through a pipe to Deldot, which we're, you know, we need a permit for that. So to answer your question about capacity, yes, we're, we're certain that the capacity of runoff from Coleman Avenue can be handled by the Deldot system. I should, I guess I can mention, on the grander scale, all that drainage ends up going down Washington Avenue, underneath the bike trail, out across Freeman Highway, beyond Waits Pond to a ditch that eventually discharges into the canal near the, who's the old mayor, mayor?
Yeah, you're talking about the Smith, the Smith House.
Yeah, it's the Smith House, right, directly adjacent to their house.
Oh, the Smith, yeah.
Yeah.
It goes, yeah, it goes into a drainage system that goes across that meadow there.
Yeah, which was all updated and upgraded 20 years ago when we did Washington Avenue.
Right. I think it's also important to note that you've got, this job, it's, this project is being done in conjunction with the BPW with a lot of infrastructure replacement of water and sewer. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's very important. The BPW has set a goal for themselves to, to remove all cast iron or ductile iron pipe as we do these projects. And they've actually undertaken several different capital projects on their own, Pilotown Road, for instance.
And this would also remove any lead service as well.
Definitely, definitely. That's a huge component of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On both streets, 4th Street and Coleman Avenue. So also in addition to the work on Coleman and 4th. So um, also in addition to the work on Coleman and Fourth Street, um, we did add in projects at Adams, Manila and King's Highway. To upgrade those ramps and crosswalks there. And at the um. Cedar and Savannah intersection on the beach side. I'll show you some details on that in just a second. Just one last thing, it's a hundred and five day construction timeframe. Uh, the board's considering this today at their board meeting as the city is today during this meeting. If it's accepted by the board in the city today, then we would get the paperwork started on the agreement with JJID and the project uh, would have started approximately mid September. With an end of the year um, completion date. Like I said, the the bid results and recommendation will be discussed under agenda item B five. So I I hope you had a chance to look at this detail a little bit. Maybe we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on it today, but it's just a detail of what's involved with. Not only the regular street portion of Coleman Avenue, but the um, pervious side that delineates the parking and creates. Infiltration for stormwater runoff. And it kind of gives you an idea at the bottom there what the taper mill is all about on Fourth Street. Um, and then hopefully you had a chance to look at these. This is really gonna improve the area over by the museum, historical museum. As everybody's aware now, it's. Uh, over the last five years, this has been really a pedestrian friendly. Important area to get to the new library, the museum, everything that's going on with the concerts on Tuesday nights when they do occur. Even getting to the bike path and the bike trail and the um. In the um. In the new library, so those two are part of the project as well. So if you have any other questions about phase twenty four. Go ahead and ask them and then we'll move on to the police department renovations.
There's additional questions at this time, Charlie, or at the end? Okay.
Whatever whatever you guys feel is convenient in terms of your timeframe.
Why don't we go ahead and take any additional questions on this project because of the uh, the time made, the timing of it in terms of. Trying to get.
Okay, thanks. I'll jump in with my question. My first, there is two phase question. First question is. Does anyone know if uh, Chesapeake Natural Gas has? Gas lines in these uh, in these streets? Has this area been served by gas?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I am very concerned. I think this is a question. Do I remember reading somewhere in city documents that we have a policy that once the street is repaved? Uh, reconstructed that um, we have a ineffective moratorium that no one is allowed to dig into that surface. During like a five year or seven year period. Do I recall reading that somewhere?
Something to that effect, but it clearly is based upon need.
Yeah, well, my question, of course, is where I'm going with this is. I'm concerned that we by us making these improvements, and I'm not questioning the need for improving these roads. That's not my issue here. But what I'm wondering is. Would it not be prudent for us to uh, make sure that there's an accommodation made included in this construction? That would provide for uh, gas distribution into this neighborhood. Otherwise, what I'm fearful of is that our gas, natural gas provider will use. The excuse of the fact that the road has just been repaved. That we, you know, that they can't possibly put a gas line in there. For the next seven years, so the next five years because of our policy of not allowing a road to be cut after it's been uh. Re, you know, recently uh, improved or repaved.
Amberie and I uh, did mention this to Chesapeake when we had a meeting with them last week. Uh, and they're not close enough to this that they're even considering this as an option right now.
Okay.
Only way we could possibly adent- addent- uh, address that potential need would be, uh, and Charlie didn't design this into this project. Would be to run some uh, some sleeves that could be then fed with a natural gas line.
Okay. And I would even suggest another way of approaching this is to go back to Chesapeake and. Get their their design for what it would take to put in a distribution line on these streets so that. And then they hand that design over to the city, which in turn would. I make sure that whatever is put in is compliant with the natural gas. Industry standards for putting in a distribution line. I think we need to really think about this, the impact of um. Of us not making this area uh, uh, suitable for gas distribution.
One there can. Go ahead, please, Charlie.
Yeah, so um, we've kind of been down this road a few times with them and if. And they're not very inclined to give you a design because. I guess they don't want to pay for it, the the. But we've learned enough about how they do their projects. When they put in the actual gas main that'll serve this street. They will directionally bore it. They'll directionally bore it from Savannah Road to King King's Highway.
Right.
So there'll there'll be pits on either end, hopefully not inside Coleman or Fourth, and I doubt that they will be. So it'd be more like a Deldot permit and Deldot's approval. The problem always with, the the problem isn't the mean going down the middle of the road. The problem is serving the homes.
That's correct.
They will not know. And they won't know until they get ready to do that project and they interview every or survey every. Resident, whether those residents will want the service or not. So it may be possible to. I don't even know if it's possible, but you could possibly sleeve gas services, so. It could be served, but um. There'd be a lot of money spent that you're just not sure about whether it's gonna. Pay back or not, and I'm still not certain whether they wouldn't have to go into the street to actually make the connections anyway. It's a difficult problem. I understand what you're saying. It would be nice to do that. There's just a lot of.
Yeah, okay, there are two, there are two comments in the chat. One says the proposed work will make the street much safer approach to the hospital and a real improvement for the street. And thank you for your attentives to our neighborhood concerns and uh, and then uh, the other one says, well, are we, from Sumner Crosby says. Uh, are we sure that natural, are we certain that natural gas is something we want to commit to? Uh, so you know, I bet it ties into Charlie's comment about, you know, natural gas is done on a per household basis. And so people, uh, some, we found this to be in basically every residential neighborhood we've gone into. In new developments, everybody gets it in when they're going in retro act retrofitting. Certainly in Pilot Town Village, uh, there was, there was good pickup, but it was not anywhere close to a hundred percent.
Right, but in this area where these older homes exist, uh, and I believe this is still part of the historic district, if I'm not mistaken, but that's not relevant to my point. If the in these older homes, chances are that their heat is provided by oil. And that means that oil delivery trucks are coming in to that neighborhood with some regularity and having to fill up. Uh, oil tanks or possibly LP tanks, I'm not sure. But the critical thing is, is that if they already have, if they're already burning. Uh, that kind of fuel, then the conversion to a natural gas fired furnace. Is it's not a big lift.
It is a big lift for some people because of. Uh, and and also repiping. So I I get what you're saying and we certainly want to do all we can. And uh, Kay Carnehan has just put someone a comment in and says, we are all electric and no interest in Chesapeake. So there's one resident of. Of Coleman Avenue weighing in right there.
The other thing is that there's only two houses on one side of the street and the all the other houses. So the um. The cost to run the main, the for them to meet their economics.
Right.
Because we've had these conversations, it 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 would be a big, a big. Jump, especially if people on the side of the street where most of the houses are where Kay is.
There are only three houses on Kay's side of the street and there are only two on the others, I'm aware. So they're talking about five houses. That's gonna be really hard to get an economic model that works there.
Well, that, of course, gets back to where uh, the Chesapeake is defining what is these neighborhoods and not the city. You know, they they have free rein over that.
Okay, we're getting several comments here. Summoners had a couple of comments, um. Uh, and here is Diane who lives next door to Kay, and she says they're not interested in moving to natural gas. So there's two of the five houses that would possibly be served, saying that they're not interested in natural gas.
All right.
And Summer's comments were, I agree with Kay's comment, this is uh, this is the fu- uh, this is the future all electric. And then, so that's where we are.
Okay.
I'm like, I think maybe to relieve your little bit is that when we do bigger streets, we definitely contact Chesapeake. Um, we've done that. Several, several projects. I think it might have come up early on on this project, but got squashed because as Amberie mentioned, the. They're very difficult in terms, these two streets would have to be combined with some other gigantic user, which isn't. Which isn't, that I'm not aware of in that area for them to to move forward with it.
Right, I guess where I was going with this is, is that it might be true that everyone on Coleman does not want gas service and I respect that. But if in fact, running a gas line down Coleman allows distribution to be realized. South of King's Highway or along King's Highway where they presently don't have gas assets, you know, gas distribution lines. Then that's an opportunity. It's a right of way that can be used effectively. So there's, yes, there is their individual residences and they have their choice to subscribe to gas or not. But if it gets us from point A, which is basically BB Hospital where we know Chesapeake has assets. And it gets us over to Savannah, I'm I'm sorry, to Kings. And then allows for distribution to be extended there. There might be, it might be something where that they might be interested in and that we as city, uh, the city would be interested in as well.
Believe me, Tim, we're all interested in expanding natural gas. That connection has already been made between Savannah and King's Highway. Uh, when BB, when BB received natural gas, it went right down Monroe Avenue and crossed to BB and over to the hospital that way.
Right.
That connection has been made.
I think. Yes, I I I'm aware that that connection is made, yeah.
Isn't there also a connection between Savannah and King uh, on McPhee? When we opened that street, didn't, didn't natural gas go down there or I missed?
No, it did not.
Okay, I misremembered.
I have natural gas.
Trying to make a connection.
Andrew has gas on.
I I have natural gas on McPhee Street.
Do you have natural gas?
Yep.
Yeah.
That was my recollection.
Okay, I thought we did. Okay, good. Thank you, I stand corrected.
All right. Thank you.
Can can I ask a question? Um, on phase uh, twenty four, what what is the total cost? Um, of all the the uh, things that are rolled into phase twenty four? I couldn't figure it out from the handout.
Uh, the city's portion. Is four hundred and sixty nine thousand, nine hundred and forty six dollars and sixty seven cents. And the BPW's portion is three hundred and twenty nine thousand. And fifty three dollars, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And Charlie, I I think I heard you say that this is a problem you, a a road you've been down a number of times. So I gather in following up Tim's comment, that when you dig up a street. You're always thinking about, is this a good place to uh, run a distribution line for gas?
Yes. We do, and through the years, I mean, we obviously coordinate with the board on whatever they want to do for water and sewer and storm drainage. We're good. Years past, we've actually put conduit in for future street lighting, but we didn't do it on this project cuz it was decided not to.
Thank you.
Yep.
It, okay.
It's it's all good consideration and we can talk about it. I mean, there's other things, there's other things in the future that might. You know, be necessary in terms of. Electronic communications and so forth.
Right. Charlie, does the uh, the are the, is the uh. Electric and uh, telecommunications on Coleman all aerial there?
Yes.
And it all runs parallel to the uh, right of way? It's not through the backyards, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Should the utilities be buried since we're opening the street?
It's a board question.
It's a board question, it's an expensive endeavor.
Yep.
To do that, yeah.
We also had another comment that came in from uh, Drew Bitner who lives at the corner of Coleman and King's Highway, saying that he is not interested in natural gas. Uh, and Sumner Crosby has just sent in a comment saying, isn't likely that communications will um, be all. In it. Will be all wireless in the future, as in five G.
No.
Charlie, I just to follow up to, um, did you have a similar? Feedback from the people on the on Fourth Street as well as you did with the Coleman folks?
Um, no, no, and Andrew, I think we probably didn't have a sit down with them because we're just milling and overlaying that street.
Okay.
So it wasn't a full rebuild that really. Kind of deserved the attention of the residents, which when we do a full full rebuild, so many streets we've. We oftentimes have full public meetings about those, but when we're just milling and overlaying the street, we don't meet with them because. If the milling's done one day and the paving's done another day, so then you're done.
Little impact, okay.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, for the if the hundred and five day uh, projected construction timeframe. Will the the people on Coleman be able to use the road? I mean, I assume they will for some portion of that period of time. Or are they gonna have to park out on um, King's and Savannah?
It'll be, there'll be intermittent um, conflicts, Bonnie. And you know, our RPR will be in full communication with those residents about when they need to park elsewhere and when they don't. You know, I, there'll there'll be interruptions to to. Vehicular service when we put water main in and services, when we're putting some of the street top side work in. But it'll be intermittent and it just needs to be communicated as we go.
Right, and you won't, you won't have a similar problem with Fourth Street because you you're basically gonna roll it one day and you're done. Is that about right?
Well, it'll be milled one day and then paved some other day, probably when they. When it's convenient to do both streets at the same time is my guess. The problem with. Fourth Street is gonna be a challenge because as we all know, when we drive down there, there's. Every inch of space on either side of the travel ways, there's parked cars. So we need to, we need to make sure for the the two days that it's disturbed that those cars are elsewhere. But that'll be our job to do that.
But it'll be, it's limited just two days, so it's it's it's, while it be moderately inconvenient, it's not gonna be an enormous issue.
It probably won't be back to back.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, good.
So we, I think we, unless there are other questions about this particular uh, project phase twenty four. I think we've heard a lot of conversation about this. Uh, knowing that the bids have already been out, we have confirmed bids in, would you like to consider taking action on this now? Uh, and then go on with the rest of the projects, which I think are things we will certainly not take action on today.
Uh, the, I'm I'm okay with going forward. The only thing I would bring up is when we have these complete rebuilds. I mean, it's it's, you know, it's always a balance and when we have sort of the, if we repave it, we can defer rebuilding it. That's one thing, but when you have the total rebuilds, you know, you're already on the hook for the total, for the for the most expensive option. I guess my only question for for um, Charlie is, given that that it came in somewhat high. Is there any advantage to waiting since regardless of what we do, we're gonna have to rebuild it? I mean, it's. That I guess that's my only question, particularly given that the the costs that issues that he brought up and that we only had two bidders.
And how long ago were those bids collected, please?
August fourth. August fourth.
Okay, just, okay, during this month. Okay, thank you. Okay.
And then the second question is, do we want to go with the green infrastructure or do we want to save sixty thousand dollars? If I read this correctly, on bid alternate one, sixty thousand dollars to do traditional pavement. So that seems to me as a, it's a two-part question.
It is two-part question.
And let me follow up Bonnie's question. Charlie, remind me, what does green mean other than pervious?
That's basically what it means on almost every single description of green is it just increases the amount of infiltration rather than having runoff that gets to water bodies.
And is that for, true for the, the vehicle, the driving surface as well as the parking surface?
No, the driving surface is, is regular asphalt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Robbie, if you look at the diagram on page three of the handout, you can see the difference between regular pavement and the green pavement.
So.
Anne Marie's taking us back there or Charlie's.
Mr. Morgan, um, the, the regular, the paving, the asphalt part is regular pavement. But as Tim mentioned, the road is super elevated towards the pervious pavement. So all runoff will end up going across the pervious pavement and.
We'll have a chance to perk there.
Yes, yes.
Is this sort of like what you, not exactly obviously, but sort of like what we did on Bayview, tilting the street one direction to have it all going to the sand?
Yeah, well, that, it's nice to have the insurance policy that if it doesn't infiltrate, you have a place where you're directing the runoff that won't pond. In that case, we were able to take it to the dune because we did basically like you're saying, the super elevation towards the dune. Um, in this case, we're taking it to a curb that'll direct it to catch basins at the end of the street.
And is basically the, the life of the, the surface very similar in terms of the need to repave, et cetera?
What, the pervious pavers?
Exactly.
Yeah, 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 definitely. I mean, we're expecting twelve to twenty years for the asphalt and definitely you'd get that out of the pervious pavers. Maybe more.
This would be the first street we've done like this.
Definitely, yeah.
Uh, other than the one that Bonnie mentioned where we took Bayview with a super elevation and ran to the dune. Uh, but this is the first one and it could be a prototype for how we would approach other streets with the parking area being a pervious pavement. I think it's, uh,
Yeah, I'm inclined to, to, to go that direction.
Okay, Mr. Bittner just said a comment in that he, I mean, he reminding us that pavers are easier and can be taken up and replaced if you have to run natural gas, which is interesting, an interesting point as well. Okay. Any other comments? Is there a motion to move ahead with this project?
Hey, one more clarification, please. I don't have the ability to look at another device, so, uh, another screen. So I'm only looking at the engineer drawing in front of me right now. The four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar bid is for the, does not include the green street. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't.
Does it does?
There's a deduct if you don't want to go that way.
Okay. All right. So that four sixty-nine includes the green, okay, the green feature.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion to move ahead with the phase twenty-four with the, with the green pavement on the parking side or the city hall side of the street?
Rob, so move.
Thanks, Robbie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, just clarification. I think what we're talking about is, is agreeing to the bid price, which is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents for the city side. Just, just to be clear with it, what we're approved.
Right. And, and awarding the, the contract to JJID in accordance with the, the recommendation from GMB.
And the idea is, is that they would get started in by the middle of September and a hundred and twenty days later, we could expect the project to be completed, correct?
That's correct unless, unless we seek CTF funds, in which case it could be pushed out about a month.
Yeah.
Well, that is a good question. Do, do we want to specify? I don't think we need to, but do we want to specify where the funding will come from? MSA versus CTF versus transfer tax funding?
I think what we need to do is, uh, you know, we, we can certainly do that, but we need to have this conversation with Senator Lopez and Representative Smick as well, if this is a project they want to get involved in or is this a priority we want to make?
Yeah, I, I'd say that this is a priority. I mean, I think there's any question in particular.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I mean, one thing I would like to suggest as a more long-term project is whether, whether making Coleman a one-way street that, that attracts all of this ambulance traffic is, is sensible. I mean, it's such a narrow street, but that's for another day. And, and I do appreciate that this is the fastest and obviously when you have an ambulance, you want it to get there as quickly as possible. It is the fastest way from, uh, because of the, the entrance there. But I, I do think it's something we should look at long-term, whether it makes any sense.
I think also we want to look at it when, when BB opens their new facility out on twenty-four because some of this emergency traffic will be devoted, will be detoured out to twenty-four.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, it, it's always struck me as odd that we have this, this very, very narrow street and, and we facilitated it making it, you know, the way that lots of ambulance go. I mean, I, but again, it's a long-term project that we need to talk about a lot of residents about.
All right. Well, we have a motion on the floor and a second to move ahead with the project as it has been described. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess.
Andrew?
Aye.
Okay. So the motion carries five to zero. Okay, Charlie, let's go on with the rest of your topics.
Okay, um, the next project.
Thank you.
Is the police department renovations, which we haven't done a whole lot on other than I think this was the scope of work that was developed by the city pre-COVID. I know there's been absolutely no, you know, schematic or design phase work completed. And I don't even know that we've prepared a proposal of what those costs would be. But it was on the agenda. So, you know, we, I think we talked about this maybe at the last Capital Projects Committee. This is the scope of work that was identified by the city, maybe by the police department. And I really don't have a whole lot more to say about it than that in terms of maybe we're, what we need to talk about is the schedule for getting into the design of it and really nailing down what the scope of work is.
So maybe what we should do is defer any real serious discussion on this until we know whether, how far we want to go with this and consider the meeting we will have coming up. I think you have other things that are further fleshed out. Is that correct, Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, before I'll know exactly what's going on with this project, we, we'd have to have a, sit down with the city and the police department and really do a, you know, thorough takeoff of what the scope would be.
Yeah, I think we need to defer this particularly in light of the overtime payments that we have to make to the police. Until we know where we are financially, I just don't see.
All right. Let's move on then if we could to, uh, yeah, I think your next project on your, on your handout was the, the tennis pickleball basketball court improvements. Can we go ahead with that, please?
Yeah. So, uh, we had a meeting with the public back in late January, early February. And we got a lot of feedback from a lot of different folks at that meeting. Oftentimes they were conflicting opinions on which way to go. So we're still, we're still driving towards trying to come up with a solution that meets everybody's needs. The way that we left it after that was is that GMB would get together with the city. At that time it was Allison. I suppose it'll be her replacement and then two members of the Parks and Recreation Committee. The, the thing is on this project is that no matter what we do with identifying pickleball courts, which is a little bit of the stumbling block that the pickleball courts and the tennis court coordination and collaboration, no matter what we do, we are, you know, making certain improvements. Like we're totally restoring the court areas because of all the cracking, no matter how we stripe it at the end of the day. So we're gonna put paving fabric down, mill the entire areas, put two inches of hot mix asphalt over top of the paving fabric, which reduces the cracks and then color code it. All new fence around the entire tennis courts and basketball court. A windscreen on the canal side because those are the prevailing winds that we've learned from meetings with the tennis and pickleball community. And then also provide new basketball poles and backboards because the ones there are beginning to fall apart. So all that work will be done. No matter how we end up striping it, I think the only thing we need to finally figure out is how we're going to stripe it with the pickleball courts and the tennis courts overlapping one another. We have some more ideas. We don't have them down on a concept like the one shown on this sheet. But like I said, the next step was to sit down with the city and the Parks and Recreation Committee and try to identify what that final pickleball court, tennis court lining would look like.
And Charlie, the internal separation fencing would also depend on the final design, wouldn't it?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, right now it shows that, you know, sort of five foot or four foot high separation to not allow the balls to go through various courts at various times. But yes, definitely that would depend on the final layout.
So, uh, this.
Charlie, what's the, oh, I'm sorry.
This is really not ready for full consideration at this point.
Now, it, I think we were moving forward on it and then
COVID hit.
The pandemic hit and it was, you know, put on the back burner. Um, I'll defer to Anne Marie, but I think it's probably, you know, springing back to life now. So we'll get back on it.
Certainly the user, the use of the court is very, very heavy. Uh, and the fact that there's seventy-three, seventy-three thousand dollar grant available in place is, is attractive. Uh, you know, what, I don't know what everyone's opinion is, but seems to me would be smart to go ahead and at least get the final, the final idea and then before we put it out to bid of what we, how we would want it to look. I don't know what you're all, what each of you feel about that.
I would ask Anne Marie, would you say this grant too will probably remain in place?
Yes, as long as we are able to report progress on this and, and this one we, we have. I mean, I think we've even been anticipating getting, you know, reimbursement for some of the design work through this. So, so yeah, we should be able to carry this one forward.
Right.
And Charlie, what's the timeline from start to finish on this type of project?
Josh, you still there?
Yeah, so we, we've discussed that quite a bit about when this would get done and it's gonna get done at some time when everyone's gonna be wanting to use the courts. That's just how, how it goes. You gotta pave when the weather's good. Um, Vince and I had talked about, I want to say, giving it like a two-month uh, construction time with the expectation that it could be done quicker.
But even if you guys went ahead with your meetings at this point, um, you know, the likelihood of getting it done before the end of this calendar year, knowing that asphalt plants probably will close down at some point in December, maybe, or.
January usually, but yeah, we're, we're kind of up against it now.
So it, it, even if we went ahead with it at this point, we're looking at a spring project for the most part.
I think so.
See Josh's head nodding. Yes, is that correct, Josh?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would tend to agree.
Okay.
Which would probably be good because then you could talk to the groups involved with the striping.
Right. So we need to, we need to iron out the striping thing though before we go out to bid because that's how we stripe it is going to be, is gonna affect the bid.
Yeah, just one things. I mean, I think the schedule, from what I hear, this, the schedule that we put in place appears to be working and so, so you know, that's a good thing. Um, just a reminder to everyone, the Parks and Rec is working on a long-term solution here that doesn't solve our current issue, but just a reminder. And one thing I think that needs to be discussed is however we end up orienting these, these pickleball courts and tennis courts is, you know, whether we, when we go out to bid, we're gonna need some kind of netting to keep balls from going from one court into the other and, and causing a, a safety concern. So just something to think about.
Yeah. We've had a question, we've had a question in the chat which we ought to answer and that is, does the county provide any funding for recreational facilities in Lewis? Uh, and should it be helping us provide recreational opportunities for Lewis area? The answer is there's no, county provides no funding for recreational opportunities in Lewis. Uh, we certainly can talk to them about recreational opportunities around Lewis, but they don't provide anything for inside the city that I'm aware of. Anne Marie, is that correct?
That, that is correct. They, they do not provide any, any recreational services and to my knowledge, they do not provide any funding to municipalities for services.
Right.
The county doesn't, just to be clear, the county doesn't provide any recreational opportunities anywhere.
That's right.
I mean, it's not just within the city, it's anywhere in the county.
Well, the sports complex that's over towards Georgetown is going to be dedicated next week. Uh, and that was largely, uh, I believe state money and, uh, private money.
Yeah, I don't think that's a county, I don't think county, I mean, I remember, but I don't think the county contributed that. But to, you know, does the county, does the county even provide, um, you know, facilities outside the municipalities? I don't, I don't think they do.
I don't think so either.
I don't think so either. I have a question. Uh, picking up where Bonnie's, Bonnie's comment about the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, work to try to identify other opportunities for for tennis players and pickleball players. It seems to me that we should actually have the benefit of what their study is before we make a commitment to accommodate both sports on these courts. Um, I'm, I'm concerned, I, I'm, I'm a former tennis player and I'm just, I'm concerned about the impact of, uh, this is just an example. Uh, if we commit to having two sports played on the, this one surface and that includes, uh, this fencing that will set, internal fencing, separating tennis players from pickleball players. And then later on, we create another solution for pickleball players that takes them away from this court and puts them elsewhere to play. Uh, I'm concerned about just the effect that there would have been probably some posts put in the surface to support that, uh, that, uh, what do you call that? The internal separating fence. And, and that can be hurtful to tennis players. Does that make sense?
I understand your point. I think anything in terms of pickleball is going to be at least a couple of years out. Um, I think what we're hearing is the condition of the, of the current court is such that it's becoming less and less serviceable. Uh, so, uh, it's gonna take time to develop whatever happens with a pickleball court and find, and determine the location and all that. So it may, I understand your concern. Uh, but I do think we have to look at, uh, as we already have developed, uh, thanks to a lot of cooperative efforts, a schedule for, uh, the, a shared use of this court. Uh, you know, we, uh, we need to think about, uh, is this, is this something that requires action now? And, uh, looking to perhaps defer some of the other things, uh, until we have more information. But that's my, that's the dilemma that we're in right now. We do not have another alternative for the pickleball people other than the existing facilities are, that are already out there.
Right. Do we have any idea how, uh, what schedule the P, the Parks and Rec Department Committee is on, you know, their meeting and their, their, them doing their work to come up with recommendations?
I, I don't know. Anne Marie, do you have anything?
The Parks and Rec Commission has, has not met since, um, their July meeting. I anticipate they will. I anticipate they will meet, um, September twenty-first. I can certainly reach out to Barry Duncan. Um, because he, he was kind of taking the lead on that.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea is that we're gonna meet with Barry and Rodney. And Allison, Josh and Vince to go over where we're at and. Really just try to identify what the final striping would be.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe what you could do, Charlie, you could meet with that group. Uh, between now and the time we have, whatever September meeting we're gonna have to follow up on this, and we can bring this topic back up then.
Yeah, can I get a little clarification? I thought from what Charlie was saying about, um, the construction process that. That the renovations could go forward. I mean, I guess we are looking at next spring, but that the renovations could go forward and then the striping decision would be the add-on at the end. Did I, did I misunderstand that? In other terms, I'm just trying to get the.
Yeah, I think, I think so. I think you, yeah, I probably misspoke, but we would want to know what the final color coding would be for the striping. As we go into it. I just wanted to let you know that there's this whole set of work that's gonna be done, no matter how we decide to stripe it.
Right.
But the striping is the piece that's holding it up right now.
Okay.
And knowing the striping will all, will often, all, will change the bid.
Yes.
Bonnie, were you suggesting that we could approve the project and go ahead and just try to push the striping decision? To be made in time for the, uh, striping to be done as part of this project?
Yeah, well, not quite. I mean, I would, I, what I was trying to figure out is, is whether we could go forward and then the striping could be. You know, added at the end, but if, if the striping in fact has to be part of the bid, then obviously we can't go forward until we resolve the striping.
And I think.
Actually, can I, can I throw in a suggestion? Uh, I, first of all, I thought we were actually working with firm bids. Is that not correct?
No, these are just estimates, yeah.
These are estimates, okay. And estimates are based upon not conversations with contractors or. Professional estimates based upon, you know, the kind of engineering work that you do.
Yeah, our professional estimates based on previous bids. We've, we have had some discussions with suppliers about the fencing, so just. For instance, the wind, the wind, um, fabric and some of the other items.
Okay.
Okay, uh, because what, okay, then what I would suggest is as you go. I don't know what the bot, the council's gonna decide here, but I think what would be helpful is that if we. Based upon your recommendation, we, we think of this as two different stages. One of them is the surface refurbishment, taking care of that, those problems and then get a separate bid. Uh, for the, uh, the striping, the actual marking of this, uh, the court surfaces. I think it'd be. Helpful to actually break those out.
I'd be the most expensive way to present, to approach it.
Yeah.
I'd say.
Separate item.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I think I'm, I'm hearing is, uh, this is great information from Charlie. That, the, the group that's looking at the, it, Parks and Rec needs to weigh in on what to do going forward and then we'll, we would decide on, um. Or, or, I don't know if it's the whole Parks and Rec or the subcommittee, but. Um, and then we decide in September, perhaps whether to go forward or not. Um, but this is, this is a spring project, so. Um, what's your, what's your lead time? In order to do this next spring, Charlie, what kind of lead time do you need? In terms of council approval to go through the whole bidding process and get things in place?
Uh, for our springtime projects, the latest I'd, I'd like to bring project to council is at the January meeting.
Okay. We got some time.
I think so. Bonnie, you're, Bonnie, you're spot on in terms of, we're not ready to. I'm not recommending that we do anything in terms of council making a decision today, because.
No.
We've got to flesh out a lot, a lot of things before I, I'm ready to present that to you.
All right. Well, I think you can go ahead with your meetings with, um.
Yeah, I saw, I got.
Bonnie and, and Barry. Okay. And we're gonna have to conclude this meeting now because we have a ten o'clock meeting and everybody needs to get to City Hall, uh, before we, uh. Before we have that meeting. So, we're looking at the week of the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth of September to schedule the next meeting. If everybody can take out your calendar or look up your, pull up your calendar, let's look at what might work.
The afternoon of those days is fine with me, uh, Ted.
Afternoon of what? We're talking about the week of the twenty-first or the twenty.
I thought you meant the, the days of the twenty-first and twenty-eighth.
No.
Uh, how about the, how about the afternoon of the twenty-second?
That does not work for me.
Okay. Um, how about the afternoon of the twenty-fourth?
Uh, that doesn't work for me. I could do the morning of the twenty-fourth. We need to allow at least a three, preferably a four-hour block. How about Friday, the twenty-fifth?
Works for me.
Good.
We do the morning?
Okay, can we do like start at nine on the Friday, the twenty-fifth?
And, and just for clarity, this will be Capitol Projects and General Budget Amendments as well, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll put the, well, Charlie, I'm sorry to cut you short. You did a great job of getting this program organized, but I think. We got, uh, we got through the most important thing, which is the time-sensitive project of the streets improvements for twenty-four, phase twenty-four. And the rest of this, uh, perhaps between now and the time we get together and later part of September. You'll have more information about the Rollins Rooms, estimates of costs and things like that.
Sure. Mayor, do you see, um, we do have a comment from Sumner that we may want to address on that?
I haven't gotten that one, okay?
So, he said, um, when we discuss the work to be done on the Rollins Center, which will be on the twenty-fifth. Um, could we consider upgrades to the sound and recording system? And we actually made those upgrades. We added mics and we upgraded the recording system, so that's all done. Um, what we are looking at is adding cameras so that we can stream. We, um, and he also said upgrade to the internet. We, that's not our internet there, it's, uh, LHSs. So, um, we need to work with them on any internet issues.
Yeah, can, can I just say on the bathrooms, um, two things that crossed my mind, I mentioned to Ted was. First of all, you know, we've been trying to kind of crunch these bathrooms in the envelope of the current building. It strikes me that one thing we might want to think about is whether we want to add them, you know, in, in a bump out to the building. Um, because I, I really think we're trying to, to cram things into a, a very small space. The, the other question I had was, and this is obviously a council decision, is, um, going, the way this has been conceptualized so far is two bathrooms, one. ADA compliant and one, um, uh, unisex. And I guess my question is, you, based on our projected. Need for these bathrooms, do we need two? Um, and so then the question would be just the ADA compliant, so we'll just throw those two ideas out there.
That, the problem with that is it's a building code. The building code requires two.
Well, that answers that question. So then I'm, I'm down to my, does it make more sense to tack on? A new sort of part of this. We've got some room. We'd probably lose some parking spaces, but we've got some room. Uh, or does it make sense to try to cram two bathrooms into this already very, uh, very restricted space?
Charlie, we can have a, uh, offline conversation about the conversation Bonnie and I had, because we talked about how it could be done.
Okay. I'll just, just so you know, we're ninety percent done the design that has the two inside, so we can certainly look at it the other way.
Okay.
But, um, by the time September, the meeting in September rolls around, we, we will definitely be ready to present, you know, what our. What our findings are. We won't have bids, obviously, but we'll, we'll be able to present where we're at.
So, I just unmuted Morgan. She had a comment on that.
Whatever you're drinking, it sounds like you're having a good time.
You're underwater.
It's doesn't improve.
Anne Marie, Anne Marie, will you mute yourself? Try now, Morgan.
Didn't help.
Morgan?
We lost her.
No. No, it's, it's rough.
Could you just type it in and we'll get it that way?
Sorry, Anne Marie. That worked yesterday when we had a meeting.
Okay.
The ho- the host muted and then everybody was clear after that.
Somebody shut up your host.
Looks like it came up.
Yeah, it says, uh, it did not go through the building code for bathroom additions since it would open a can of worms. Two tenants in one space. Okay.
Yeah, except that we own the building.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, we can explore that idea.
Yeah, I think it kind of got in, we got into that a little bit on. You know, exiting, emergency exiting from the Rollins Room space.
Right.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not great right now the way it is and. Whether you can depend on going through the museum or not is probably not realistic either, so, I mean, we can, we can talk. That's some of the stuff we wanted to go over with you and Anne Marie.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. All right, so, uh, unless there's anything else to bring forward, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I moved.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We'll see you all at City Hall, most of you at City Hall in about, uh, six minutes or so. So, thank you all very much. Productive conversation this morning. Obviously, there's a lot to consider. In the meantime, between now and the twenty. The twenty-fifth of September, we'll also have a better read from Ernie and Steve as to what they might be interested in and. Share them with, what, what projects are out there and then we can prioritize them.
Mayor, what time was that twenty-fifth meeting?
Nine o'clock.
Okay, got it.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, see you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.